Salam alekum everybody. Sister Ali, I think we should start maybe in two minutes maximum?
Yes, Insha Allah.
I think we should start Sister Aliya.
Yes, Insha Allah brother. Bismillah ar-Rahman ar-Rahim wa salatu wa salaam ala sayyidina Muhammad wa ala alihi wa sahba. Distinguished participants, Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. It is indeed an honor and a great pleasure to welcome you to today's public hearing session on the exposure draft of the governance standard, governance and management of investments account. We are holding this public hearing in collaboration with the State Bank of Pakistan and we would like to extend our appreciation to them for their support and cooperation. Now, please allow me to just brief you about the agenda of this public hearing. The first ten minutes are allocated for the welcoming remarks. Then Mr. Umar Mustafa Ansari, the Secretary General of IOFI will start the discussion on the exposure draft. After that, we have ten fifteen minutes break and then we will continue the discussion on the exposure draft and we will conclude at five thirty Bahrain time, Insha Allah. Now, for the welcoming remarks, I would like to invite Dr. Zahid Rahman Khokhar, Director, Islamic Finance Policy Department at the State Bank of Pakistan and IOFI Governance and Ethics Board member to provide his welcoming remarks. Dr. Zahid, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much Sister Aliyah, Assalamualaikum warahmatullah. To everyone, Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Secretary General, Brother Umar Mustafa Ansari, distinguished guests, members of IOFI, respected scholars, industry practitioner and participants. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. On behalf of the State Bank of Pakistan, I am really glad to welcome all of you to be in this public hearing. This standard was issued last year and it has gone through a number of public hearings until now. And we are hoping that the standard will Insha Allah reach to conclusion this year. And especially for this standard, you would notice that it is one of the, I would say, the most detailed standard on this topic, which has been issued so far by any standard-setting body. And I believe that Insha Allah with the discussion today, we have some useful remarks which will help IOFI to improve the standard, will, you know, will help to answer your questions if you have any of these. So, and if you have gone through the standard, of course, we will go through in detail in this session. That starting from the policy framework and the strategy for investment accounts. This standard has divided, you know, this whole framework into peak commencement considerations and, you know, the time of account opening or establishing the relationship, then ongoing consideration at a time of relationship, then at the time of redemption or the liquidation of the institution. So, it's a quite comprehensive framework that which tells the market players as well as the regulators that how to, you know, regulate and govern the institution of investment accounts. And then you will see a quite important section on transparency and disclosure. And as you know, previously, of course, I have, IOFI has some good work on the disclosure side on investment accounts. But I personally believe that implementation part on this one has been a bit weaker, I would say. And I hope that with this standard, the implementation of when it's, after the implementation, implementation starts for this standard, Insha Allah. That story is part and transparency on the investment accounts will also into. Simultaneously, if you look at the standard, it has also covered the role of auditors, external auditors and the Sharia supervisory board in the entire process. So, Insha Allah, I hope that the standard will be very useful in terms of investment accounts. And this debate has been going on for a long time, that how much, you know, we have offered, we have started banks, Islamic banks offering this kind of account. But the governance issues, the main in these accounts and not much care has been given to the rights of the investment account holders. So, I hope that the governance and the rights of investment account holders and transparency part, mystery is part of each other. Will improve with the implementation of the standard, issues of the standard. And of course, the market consistency is, we are currently working Central Bank of Pakistan on something on investment accounts. And as we can see that there are issues of market harmonization as well, which we feel that practices differ in many ways from bank to bank within one single market even. So, this, you know, the role of this ten will be Insha Allah in terms of the harmonization of practices, not only within the country but as for internationally, Insha Allah as well. Now, from the State Bank of Pakistan side, I can just share with all of you that we are very committed center of adoption of the IOFI standard, we are the regulatory member of the IOFI, we have been working with the IOFI since inception, of course. And we have embarked on the journey to adopt Sharia standards and we are adopting it for our market one by one. We already implemented, adopted over forty standards, Sharia standards of the IOFI for markets. And just this morning, we have the meeting of actually advisory committee of the State Bank of Pakistan. And we have actually reviewed two more standards, Insha Allah. So, so this is on the Sharia, on the Sharia standards part. But apart from this, we are also, you know, looking at the governance standard, we have recently, we are, as I mentioned, we are working on our investment account standard and we are carefully looking at this exposure draft. Similarly, our Sharia governance framework, which was updated last year, has taken lot of the benefit from the IOFI's Sharia governance standards. And Insha Allah, the accounting standard, we are also making headway and we are talking to stakeholders to, Insha Allah, move forward on the implementation of the IOFI accounting standard, Insha Allah, with the best of time. So, with this session, I believe this is an important opportunity for all of us to have a good discussion on this one. If you can share your question, you, Insha Allah, you will get lot of good knowledge from Brother Umar as well. Insha Allah, he is very passionate about this topic and I'm sure that he has given a lot of time to this standard as well. And I can tell you the working group as well, I'm cheering the working group on this standard and I can tell you that even working group has given a lot of good time on this one. And so, Insha Allah, State Bank again extends warm welcome to IOFI as well as all of you for participating and sparing time for this, you know, public hearing. And Insha Allah, the commitment you are showing with your participation, Insha Allah, will help in advancing best practice in Islamic finance industry. So, with this, some remarks, Brother Umar, I pass on to you. Salam alekum.
Thank you, Dr. Zahid. For my welcoming remarks, I would like just to first to brief you about the exposure draft of this governance standard. IOFI Governance and Ethics Board felt the need to develop this governance standard to set out governance framework for the management of investments account and other similar participatory investment instruments. This standard is expected to harmonize Sharia compliant practices across jurisdictions and provide guiding principles to Islamic financial institutions to, in order to better manage the fund the profit-sharing mechanisms equitability to different stakeholders and specifically investments account holders. Now, for the public hearing session, I would like to highlight that this is the fourth public hearing session being held in English. And we had a round table on the same exposure draft. Also, additional public hearing is expected to be held in Arabic this year before finalization of this standard. Insha Allah, after completing all the public consultation process, we will compile all the comments and present it to the relevant working group and board for further discussion and deliberation. Now, for the approach of this session, I would like to emphasize that the whole purpose of this public hearing is to benefit and learn from your experience and knowledge and share your feedback in order for us to enhance the quality of IOFI's standard for the best interest of Islamic finance industry. Therefore, all your comments, questions, suggestions are welcomed in Q and A tab. Kindly please avoid using the chat window in order to help us to compile all the comments in one place. Finally, I would like to share one thing is that the presentation that will be presented in today's public hearing session is exactly same as the exposure draft available on the website and we will share the link to the exposure draft in the chat window. Now, without any further delay, I would like to welcome Mr. Umar Mustafa Ansari, the Secretary General of IOFI, to start the discussion on the exposure draft. Brother Umar, it's over to you.
Thank you very much Sister Aliyah, thank you very much brother Zahid for the opening remarks and thanks to the management of State Bank of Pakistan for all the efforts in support of Islamic finance and for support of IOFI. It is actually always a pleasure to work in collaboration with the Central Bank of Pakistan. Brother Zahid, yesterday we had a question, actually yesterday's event was also supported by you as, and you were there personally as well and supported by SPP, there was a question particularly related to Pakistan's market for which we were trying to find you, you know. So, but I think you left before that point. The respected participant, brother Imtiaz Abbas Hussain has actually asked to put the question again. So, he has not put it in the Q and A tab, but actually his point was, if I remember correctly, brother Imtiaz Abbas Hussain, if you can put your question in the Q and A tab, it will be better, but otherwise, as I recall, it was about the conversion process in Pakistan, that whether it's actually happening and what's happening on that front. This is again not only of interest for participants from Pakistan, but it is, you know, of interest for us at IOFI and for all the wider audience of Islamic finance because a mass-scale transition is something that we all hope for, we all pray for all the Muslim countries. And a little bit like, you know, comments, comments if you would like to add on this point, that where does this process stand and what is expected?
Thank you so much, brother Umar. I mean, for all of, for some of you who might not be aware, that the Federal Shiaq Court, which is a federal board, a federal authority. So, they, Federal Shiaq Court has given a decision two years ago that by end of twenty twenty seven, the financial economic system should transform into RIBA-free system. So, they have given a verdict and last year, the constitution of Pakistan has also, there is a change in which they have mentioned that by first of twenty twenty eight, this system will change and implementation, RIBA will be removed from the system. But as you can imagine, it's not a small task, it's a huge task for a big country like Pakistan, which is the fifth largest nation in the world. So, for, and which has around forty, forty-five banks and of course, a lot of insurance companies and big financial sector as well. So, the work has started and there has been a transformation committee at the level of finance, which is, which is chaired by Minister of Finance and there is a committee at the level of Central Bank, where two deputy governors are chairing, so that is one part. Now, under these committees, there has been seven working groups. One for the legal changes in the legal system or the, or the laws have been reviewed, the regulation, all the regulations of the central bank and the CPR being reviewed. Simultaneously, one working group is looking at implementation of the international standards, which includes IOFI and IFSP. Similarly, we are working on one on the IT, one on the awareness, one on the capacity building. So, we have around seven working groups and each working group has five, six work teams under them. So, around thirty-five work teams are working under these seven working groups. So, we have, we, like the first stage, we have already reviewed all the laws in the country and we have already made a modified version of them, which we will send to parliament, Insha Allah, soon. Similarly, for the central bank regulations, we just have a working group meeting last, yesterday. And we actually reviewed all the changes which have been proposed, it's almost, this work is almost complete. Insha Allah, after the approval of the management, we will be able to move forward on that. So, Insha Allah, so things are happening, of course. But one major hurdle which we are facing as an institution, as a country, which I think we just have a trusty meeting of the IOFI just a few hours ago. And this discussion also came up, that around half of the books of the banks are actually in the government securities. And this has to be, and for a smooth transition of the banking system and even the financial system towards interest-free system. So, you first have to change the government debt from, convert, convert government debt into the, you know, a Sukuk and Islamic securities. So, for that, we, of course, we are looking at the structures which needs to be used. Until now, government has been using mainly the Ijah structure, but of course, Ijah you need the underlying assets which can be used. So, we are, we are also working on that one, that how we can find those assets. Similarly, some other structures are being considered, which might need a different paradigm in terms of the structures. So, Insha Allah, the work is moving, of course, and we have asked all the banks to, and not only banks, but DFI, Development Finance Institutions, microfinance banks to share with us the plan they want, the transformation plan, how they want to convert their operations in Islam. And you have received already the plans of the banks and we are so now receiving the DFIs and microfinance banks, which we regulate the central bank. So, we are now talking to the banks, talking to the individual institution, guiding them in this process. So, Insha Allah, we are very hopeful, we have received quite encouraging feedback from the financial sector, which we regulate. And they have given the plans, how they want to transform, like one indication, I can mention, the last year around eighty percent of the new branches, which were licensed by the central bank, was coming. And are more similar cases for this year. So, as you can imagine, the more supply comes to, Insha Allah, demand is already there, market demand is there. But the supply side was an issue for some time, so Insha Allah, on the supply side, things are still happening. So, we are hopeful, Insha Allah, that things will move smoothly, it's a big task, of course, it's not an easy task and need lot of coordination and support from internal stakeholders within the country, government and base bodies and the private sector place, as well as some international bodies as well. So, we are talking to everybody and we are trying to take it smoothly, which is the main, of course, concern that we have to make it smoothly. So, Insha Allah, it's a positive development, Sahib, now.
Thank you very much, brother Zahid, and it's very heartwarming to know all about all these efforts which are already there. We pray and we assure our all support at the level of IOFI, that whatever is possible at our level, we will try to support the activity. With that, without any further delay, we need to move to the today's subject. The investment accounts, a couple of initial points have been mentioned by you and Sister Alia. So, let me just try to summarize a few points before we move to the standard. First thing is that investment accounts are nearly seventy percent to sixty, between fifty to seventy percent of the balance sheets of Islamic financial institutions. And this is actually a very huge, like sort of chunk of, chunk of, like, you know, a balance sheet which is falling under this. Not only this, this has link with the underlying assets as well, so the issue further enhances that it's not only about having the deposits or investment accounts, but it's also about the underlying assets part. And the irony is that unfortunately, the governance processes in these areas are weak. In a large number of institutions, you won't even have people who are actually managing the function. At times even finance function, Sharia compliance function, some other function actually just reviews a monthly working, nothing more than that. No, no proper governance and management and control system exist. IT is a must for that, IT, proper core banking solutions, proper IT modules. They are a necessity for it, but we see that it's missing in lot of situation and that is where lot of people come out and say that, okay, we don't believe in Islamic finance because the way things are actually happening that, okay, we just invest money in Islamic bank and we get a return, just like a conventional bank. That is where we need to understand that there is a significant need for appropriate processes, governance, controls, written policies and procedures, established control processes. So, all these things are where we have been feeling that there have been need. Not only this, there is another very important aspect in within the, within the Islamic finance structure that a large number of Islamic financial institutions are dependent significantly on the funding provided by stakeholders, like investment account holders, who are not shareholders and hence are not technically the decision-makers. Again, you can say that even shareholders are not decision-makers and that is the reason that shareholders appoint Board of Directors as their agent to run the organization and they have the right to elect them. And this is to safeguard their interest that conventionally, these practices of corporate governance exist. Now, just think of this, that what corporate governance practices try to ensure for the shareholders, particularly for the shareholders who are not involved in day-to-day activities of the institution and who do not have right to interfere into those activities. Corporate governance practices are there to ensure that appropriate system of control and governance is there to safeguard the interest of the stakeholders, primarily the shareholders. Now, when we come to Islamic financial institution, specific structure like this, where there are stakeholders who don't even have a right to elect the Board of Directors and whose money is at stake, whose money is at risk, but they don't have a say in the process. So, that is where the, there is more significant need with regard to the governance processes, improved corporate governance practices as well as Sharia governance practices, as well as what we call additional fiduciary responsibility, which is there in case of Islamic financial institutions. And again, I do not want to go dwell with too much into those debates with regard to how this additional fiduciary responsibility impacts the transaction structures and the relationship of the stakeholders and how the contracts of Mudarba and other relevant contracts that are used for investment account purposes need, like, you know, how they need actually appropriate mechanism and process of controls to be there to ensure that these are executed in the right way, in line with Sharia principles and rules, in line with appropriate asset management practices, in line with, while maintaining appropriate asset quality for the underlying assets, having appropriate recording, reporting, computation, distribution, allocation and attribution, reserve attribution, all these things need to be inbuilt in the system. To be honest, this topic by itself needs lot of discussions, some of those discussions will be coming while we go through the standard. But since it's not the first public hearing, I would prefer to move directly to the standard after this little bit of preamble. Just to clarify one thing, that the main objective of this standard is to ensure that investment accounts are Sharia compliant and additionally, they are properly governed and managed according to the real structure, which is in line with Sharia principles and rules and the fiduciary responsibility of the institution towards stakeholders is appropriately met. So, with that, I'll, I'll share the screen and I'll move ahead. There is, there is a question from brother, like, you know, before I move, there is a question from brother Abu Trin Diallo. The question is in French and for sure, I'm not a French speaker. As much as I can understand the question, it's a bit philosophical with regard to the structure of Islamic finance institutions and the investment, investment activities. That is, in a nutshell, I would say that this standard aims to ensure that Islamic investment activities by the Islamic financial institutions are managed not in line with the conventional practices, not similar to conventional practices, but in line with their true nature. Lot of you who attend our multiple, who have already attended our multiple public hearings and some of you, I can see there were very senior people, some of them have been or are still members of our respective boards. You might have heard me saying one thing again and again, at IOFI, we believe that Islamic finance is different. If it is not different, then it is not needed. It is needed, it was needed because Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala said that Allah has prohibited preba and permitted pre. Islamic finance is about replacing the prohibited activities with permissible activities, hence it becomes different. It's not only a change in name, it's not only a change in, change in documentation. It's actually a change in the business model, it's actually a change in the mindset that is needed. It's a change in the relationship between the stakeholders and that is the reason that IOFI's standards are needed. And I would like to put the question other way around as well. If you believe that Islamic finance is different, then for sure, it is trying to serve the purpose. But if Islamic finance is no different from conventional finance, except for documentation and nomenclature, then it is not serving its purpose and maybe, it may be a harsh statement to say, but I would say that then it is not Islamic. It's not only about change of name, it's not only about change of documents, it's about change of structure, change of working model, change of business model. It's not only about change of name, it's not only about change of documents, it's about change of a structure, change of working model, change of business model. Change of, change of recording, reporting of transactions. Change of, change the way actually even the decision making is done, change the way the controls are established in the process. Change the way risks are managed in institutions. This quest, this standard is trying to answer almost all of the questions that I'm talking about. With this specific respect to the investment accounts. So a little bit like, you know, but from, from our perspective, from the, we, we do not want to synergize, we do not want to. Integrate with the conventional in a way that we lose our integrity and we lose our distinguished factors. Distinguishing factors that we have from conventional finance are the basis of our existence in Islamic finance. And accordingly, while we understand and we want to remain part of the whole. Uh, remain part of the whole, uh, you know, domain and regime of conventional finance as a whole or the. Overall financial system, but we want to maintain our unique characteristics, our distinguishing factors and. Characteristics with, without becoming, you know, we become, without becoming just a. Name change, like you know, version, name changed version. Or maybe a nomenclature change or a documentation change version of the conventional finance. So with that, uh, like you know, brother Abu Ghairn has couple of other general comments, so just. I'll just move ahead. Uh, let's move ahead on the discussion on the standard itself. So with your permission, I'll now share the screen. And I hope today it moves well. Just to confirm, you can see the, the first page. And you can see the slides moving now, Sister Aliya, if anybody can confirm to me, because yesterday I was having a problem with my system.
Yes, brother, we can see the slide.
Okay, so you can see the changing slides as well.
The changing, no, we can't see it. You are presenting the first slide.
Okay, no, 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 no. This is the problem that is happening in my system unfortunately. So I'll have to stick to this, like you know, version where, like you know. I'll, I'll have to stick like this. Okay, can you see the screen now?
Yes, brother, can see.
Okay, so now you can see the changing screen as well?
Yes.
Okay, my apologies to everybody because since the last few days, I'm feeling that my Zoom. Is having some problem with the PowerPoint slideshow. I don't know why it's happening. But it is, it is happening today for the third time. So I need to find a fine solution with our I T team. But for now, I think it will work like this. So. Here, I just like to, like you know, move, like you know, for the introduction part, on the introduction part, we have already discussed some of the key things. One thing I forgot to mention is that at E O P, we consider it as a part of a more comprehensive project. The first part of the project was revision of the accounting standards on, on, on investment accounts. And some of you, I can, I can recognize some of very learned people who have been generally part of our public hearings and some of the working groups. You are already aware that we revised our FAST twenty seven on investment accounts. And we came up with multiple standards, including the transfer of asset standard as well. So we have developed financial accounting standards that were issued. Uh, last year on, final standards were issued year before last year, that is twenty three and. On investment accounts, on, on, which include on balance sheet investment accounts and off balance sheet assets under management. And we had a standard on control which determines what remains on balance sheet and what remains off balance sheet. And we stepped, we, we updated and revised our standard on transfer of assets between investment pools. So the accounting part and the disclosure part as brother was also touched upon. Uh, has been already done. That was for us first part of the, first part of the project. Uh, even investment accounts related reserves standard was already done some time back. Standard number FAST thirty five on risk reserves that was already finalized by O P some time back. So effectively, the accounting part was done already. Sharia standard, you are aware that is already available on investment accounts. And now we have developed this governance standard. As brother Zahid rightly mentioned, that it's a very comprehensive and very detailed standard. As compared to certain other standards, it is like you know, of a gigantic volume, I would say. A very huge and very comprehensive standard. And I would again reemphasize. This is because it handles more than fifty percent of the balance sheet of Islamic banks in particular. So let's move ahead, objectives of the standard. This standard aims to set out the principles for governance and management of investment accounts held with and other participatory investment instruments, P I Is, having a. Having a participatory investment instruments. We believe that investment accounts are also type of participatory investment instrument, but there can be additional ones as well. We'll come to scope and we'll come to some details. And find some, like you know, some examples later. So held with and other, held with the institution and other participatory investment instruments, having a similar nature to investment accounts. Issued by the Islamic financial institutions, the institutions. Again, uh, E O P's standards are primarily applicable in Islamic financial institutions. So this one is particularly on the institution side. If there is a non-banking, like you know, like you know, non-banking institution. That has like you know, similar instrument which is publicly offered. It may be like you know, subject to requirements mainly coming from the Supu governance standard. Uh, but from this one is primarily for the institutions. It is expected that the implementation of now, this is part two of the objective. So what we want to achieve. So first part of the objective was what standard, like you know, what is the intention of the standard. But this part is very important. That what we as E O P, and what the E O P Governance and Ethics Board wants to achieve through this one. It is expected that implementation of good governance practices for investment accounts and other similar P I Is. Uh, collectively referred to as A I As in this standard unless the context suggests otherwise, through the adoption of the standard in turn. Would help the Islamic finance industry achieve the following objective. So we believe that it will help. Industry in achieving the objectives. Number one, improve the overall level of Sharia compliance in respect of I A's. Improve the overall risk management mechanism of I A's. Enhance the confidence of the current and potential investment account holders and holders of other P I Is. And stakeholders in I F Is and recently their mutual sustainability and growth. Now, this is a very important point of mutual sustainability and growth. And this is what at time we miss. The point is that at times, this is a relationship of trust. Where even the weightages and lot of other, like you know, other profit and loss computation related. Things are in control of the, of the Mudarib, of the working partner. And this is where the Mudarib's responsibility is not only for Sharia compliance, but is also to ensure. Fairness and also to ensure that there is a mutual sustainability and growth. You don't grow. At the cost of others. You don't make profit only at the cost of others. Safeguard the reputation of Islamic finance industry by providing fair and equitable treatment to the I Hs, protecting their respective rights in accordance with the. Best practices of business conduct in respect of consumer protection and enhancing transparency and disclosures. Consumer protection again is one of the significant elements with, because Islamic financial institution, investment account holders. Have a stake in the nature that they need to have appropriate protection of their rights. So the consumer protection element. In the, in the business and the transparency and disclosure part are fundamental to that. The next point is very important that we want to promote better governance structures and controls to safeguard the interest of interested account holders, but specifically for the. Low-risk investment account. So we want to have. Safeguarding the interest of the investment account holders, that is low-risk investment account. I'll just go to the definition after this one. And the second part, very, very crucial, that we want to promote the. Practices of having high-risk investment accounts with appropriate governance structures and transparency. To promote the participatory investments on one hand and to provide opportunities for high-risk, high-return investment. To investment account holders as appropriate to their respective risk appetite on the other hand. So the point is that Islamic finance, it's the investment account holders are of two main types. Let me take you through the definition of the two types before we. Uh, we've, we just have discussion on this one, but I think it is very important to discuss low-risk and high-risk investment accounts. So first, we try to understand that low-risk investment accounts is, is the main definition. Low-risk investment accounts are the investment accounts offered to the investors at large with lower risk appetite and a safekeeping mindset. When I go to a normal Islamic bank, I do not want to put my money in an activity which is highly speculative. And I have considering the banking system, I have in the back of my mind a mindset about safeguarding my money. So for the purpose of a common mindset of an investment account holder who comes to an Islamic bank, Islamic bank. Or other Islamic financial institution to have a Sharia compliant investment account. It is not only about earning returns, it's also about a mindset of safeguarding the money. So while no Islamic finance investment account like Mudarba, Muharqa or Bakaratul Istismar based account, they cannot be. They cannot be guaranteeing any capital, but the way they should be structured, particularly for the low-risk investment account holders. They should be structured in a way that the risk. Collective risk of the investment account holders of losing money and not achieving the expected result should be minimal. And this is because they are coming to the bank calling it a bank. They are not coming to a bank calling it a investment or trading company. This is something which may not be the ideal system, but this is something which is important. And it needs to be retained in the banking system in a way. That the mindset and the safekeeping needs of the investment account holders. Along with a little bit reasonable return to them should always be there. Let's try to understand the explanation. L R I As include the L R I, low-risk U R As. That is unrestricted investment accounts and similar instruments considered to be quasi-equity, having put option of fixed maturity and stable and low return expectation. With minimal risk of losses. Their other characteristics include that these can be withdrawn on demand immediately or within a suitable notice and processing period. And are subject to high liquidity and withdrawal risk. So this is very important to understand that while, while the ideal system of Islamic finance might be more towards. Uh, risk-taking and more towards like you know, value creation through investments. But at the same time, the mindset of the investors need to be understood. And from that perspective, it is important. That investment accounts are categorized into categories, low-risk investment accounts, which are the most common forms of. Today's current, today's investment accounts in most of the banks, investment accounts, term deposits. Certificates or deposits, et cetera, that we have in Islamic banks. Those are the primary form and they will continue as a significant form. But the second thing that we want to promote and that is close to the ideals of Islamic finances. High-risk investment accounts, which includes such in restricted investment accounts and most of the. Restricted investment accounts which do not meet the definition of low-risk investment accounts. So these are the ones which will be comparatively high-risk, high-return accounts. Uh, now let me go back to the scope. Uh, let me see if we have any comments by now. Please feel free to put all your comments in the Q and A tab. Okay. Okay, brother Taimur Khan has a question. Why do you think this standard should also talk about the management of investment accounts when there is a Sharia standard on Mudarba-based investment accounts? Okay, brother Taimur, now you raised a good question. So let me try to answer. First thing is, thank you very much for your question. Thank you very much for being here with us. Now, let me try to answer it in two ways. First thing is, at E O P, we develop a bouquet of standards, a bouquet of products. So from our perspective, Sharia standards are the. The backbone, the centerpiece of all the standards we do. These are the centerpiece for the overall Islamic finance industry. But here we have a very important point that we need to understand. That you may have the best set of rules. But. I have learned this thing from one of my, my mentors and this I speak a lot. He used to speak it a lot and I used to speak it a lot. He used to say, Mr. Ibrahim Sidat, who was earlier a member of Governance and Ethics Board as well, and I had the honor to of working with him. He used to say the taste of the pudding is in its eating. It's a common saying, but he used to say it a lot and I think I also say it a lot. So the point is that when you have the best set of rules. Till the time that set of rules is not implemented properly, you cannot achieve its objective. So the governance standards developed by E O P are a means of converting those rules into practical. So having implementation of the Sharia standards, having the existence of the Sharia board, having the existence of the. Organs of Sharia governance, having the existence of the control processes, the governance processes. Relevant committees, relevant functions within the organization, relevant documentation, policies, procedures. These are the things that translate those rules into practical. Now, the governance standards take it from where it stops at a Sharia lab. And then it takes it forward and make it more implementable and makes it the implementation requirement for that. That is part one of my question, but let me complete the part one also. Again, I would say that you can then ask another question that when there was a Sharia standard or management of investment accounts. On Mudabah-based investment account, what was the need of having a financial accounting standard on that part? Let me mention this thing I mentioned to our Sharia committee in just one meeting back. And I said, I made a statement and some of our honorable scholars kindly agree to my observation. I said that in case of Musharka and Mudarba, in particular. Sharia compliance is not achieved through Sharia standard, it is achieved through accounting standards. Because it's not only the matter of having the right set of principles and right set of contracts. But it is also about the problem of how you actually put. How you actually put the, uh, put the, uh, the, the transactions into record. How you do the financial reporting, so the recording and reporting of the transactions. And then calculating the right amount of profits and losses attributable to different parties according to the principles and keeping things transparent. Without that, you cannot achieve the requirements of the Sharia standards. Then, the very important point comes with regard to the. Checking mechanism. What is the checking mechanism on that? Whether these were implemented, whether the Sharia rules were followed, whether these were accounting and reported properly. Here comes the need for the auditing standards. And besides all of it, the essence of Sharia is not in documentation, it's about values and ethics that are applied. So we create a bouquet of standards, we create a bouquet of services. That our Sharia standards, which are technically, all our other standards are also Sharia standards. And those are also reviewed by a committee of the Sharia board for that purpose. That these are all aligned with our Sharia standards. So if you ask me, I may say. That our Sharia standards are not Sharia standard, they are, they are, these all are Sharia standards and Sharia standards are product and services standards. And then we have accounting, auditing, governance and ethics standards that complete the process. So I'm sorry, you raised a very important question, but this is where I answered part one. This is my answer, part one. Sorry, some people may be unhappy with me that I took so much time. And lot of people say that Umar, you speak a lot. So but anyway, this is where part one of my answer is. Now comes to part two. Part two goes beyond Sharia principles and rules. And that takes you to the better governance and better stakeholder management and keeping fairness. So for example, in Sharia, you may have a permission. That with mutual agreement, you can have a ratio of one is to ninety nine. Ninety nine percent goes for Rabul Mal and one percent goes to working partner or other way around. Ninety nine percent goes to working partner and one percent goes to Rabul Mal. I'm just giving you a very extreme example. But the point is, you can say that according to Sharia, we can have only any weightage assigned, any P S Rs profit sharing ratios assigned that we want to have. But there is a stage when the good governance comes in. Fairness cannot be ensured purely about the, through the Sharia rules. So Sharia rules may define something like, let's say, I, I normally give this example that. Growing, growing grapes is permissible. But if you grow grapes specifically for a purpose. But if you grow grapes specifically for a purpose, that these will be sold to the wine factories, wineries. And they will be like, you know, like, you know, you can have, you can say, oh, I did not specifically sold this, I sold it to the in the open market whoever purchases and uses for that purpose, it's up to them. Now the question is, does Sharia say that you should stop growing grapes? Or it is a governance and regulatory issue to decide and limit the production of grapes to avoid that thing. And again, grapes can be a less common example in our markets, but if you see the O P M. Globally, O P M is being regulated and its growth is regulated and prohibited generally. For what? Because it can be used for heroin and others. So the question is that at times Sharia says you defines the principles and rules. But after those principles and rules, a matter of safeguarding the interest of the stakeholder, the matter of fiduciary responsibility, the matter of trustworthiness, the matter of fairness, all these things require additional principles to be in place. And that is what is not written in the Sharia standard, it's not only about this area. So here we need to understand that Sharia standards provide the foundations. But to make those foundations implemented, you need to have governance and controls. And to make sure that the principle of Sharia is properly interpreted and applied and to some of, to some extent, the objectives of Sharia are not defeated just by literal wording of the contract. This is where the governance role becomes significantly important. And that was the reason that A O P established its Governance and Ethics Board, considering that Sharia standards are the backbone. But you need to take it forward to the next level, the next level which is again, which is support to what is written in the Sharia standard, it cannot go against the Sharia standard. But yes, it can define and limit some of the things with regard to what needs to be done. Like you know, to make sure that the overall objectives are achieved. Sorry for taking too much time on this one. Okay, we have a comment from brother for brother Zahid. I am not sure whether brother Zahid is continuing today, is he continuing today?
Brother, he's away for a few minutes and he will come back.
Okay, so there is a question for brother Zahid, so we'll put for him later. There is a question about translation in Arabic, so there will be a public hearing in Arabic shortly, sister, am I right?
Yes, brother.
Do we have the date for available? So if you can type answer and put the date for the public hearing in Arabic, Insha Allah.
Yes, Insha Allah, most probably in April, I would write the date.
Okay, just you can just put him and ask, take his, like you know, our respected brother Mohammed Ruri's email address so that you make sure that he's invited. Brother Ahmed Intelly has a point, can we say low-risk account, L R I is used to protect possibilities of the investment, the risks. Yes, that is, that is significantly correct that low-risk and managed risk activities will be done through the low-risk investment accounts and these are the majority of the investment accounts that we have and this will continue to be the significant portion of investment accounts. At the Governance and Ethics Board, there was a huge discussion that some of the core requirements of Sharia, some of the essence of Sharia requirements are not met in the investment account. So there was one approach that was proposed initially. And that was more about that A O P should take a more clear picture about what should be the investment account's real situation. If you go to the ideal situation, that ideal situation may not work particularly in the dual banking systems. That was the reason that we consciously decided that we will distinguish the investment accounts in two types. One type which is in low-risk investment accounts, again, there is no compromise on Sharia and there is no compromise on fairness, equity. But at the same time, we need to understand that some of the investment accounts like low-risk investment accounts will be subject to comparatively better controls with regard to risk management and calculated estimates of profits and losses. Without doing any significant risk-taking transactions and without going into into speculative or any high-risk transactions. So that is, that is the crux of the reason, the crux of the decision that the A O P Governance and Ethics Board decided that we keep two types. Overall, it will be one standard, but whatever is more specific to low risk or high risk at different stages, we will define that. Brother Imtiaz Abbas Susayn has a very detailed question, so let's try to read his question and try to answer it. You rightly said, Master Umar, that people are not serious with Islamic finance, believing both conventional Islamic finance are the same, even CEO of conventional bank has the same feeling. I used to ask a question from them, will meet the eight if a goat was slaughtered after saying Bismillah, Allah Akbar and other same quality goat was slaughtered without saying Bismillah Allah Akbar, they replied that second one is haram. Then I asked them both a while, that both are the same. So Islam is based on intention, Nia accordingly. Islamic finance is based on Nia. Nia is based on honesty, which is lacking in, you are talking in a particular experience of Pakistani Islamic banking and Takaful. I would say that based on my experience globally, a lot of things in Pakistani Islamic banking and Takaful are much better than some other parts of the world as well. So it's not, don't undermine your practices that much. Nothing in Islamic banking currently is ideal because we are living in a world which is not ideal. But at the same time, we need to make sure that we follow the minimum requirements and that is the intention of A O P to ensure minimum requirements and minimum standards and benchmarks are met by Islamic finance industry across the globe. Anyway, you're continuing your question, hence we realize that governance and management are grossly neglected and ineffective. Do you agree with me, sir? I won't say grossly neglected and ineffective at A O P, we try to avoid adjectives. So I would remove the word grossly and I would say that neglected and somehow ineffective, yes, I agree to that part. Maybe, maybe on a lighter note, maybe if it was not being recorded and it was not live with so many people there, maybe I may answer in private a bit different. But on an overall basis, we believe that yes, these are neglected, these are somehow somehow ineffective and that is the reason that we are trying to develop these standards to address this issue. Brother Muhammad Imran has a question, what is the need of voting right to Mudarba based depositors, same is not few shares categories to and B O D is looking at. Brother Imran, your point is like this, that you, you know, if you give only the responsibility to B O D. Question is, do you think in the current corporate governance regimes, unless you adopt A O P governance standards in general, A O P governance framework in general and A O P's this governance standard, do you think the Board of Trustees, Board of Directors has this terms of reference for them? So unless there is a proper Sharia governance mechanism and if there is not a proper adoption of proper Sharia governance standards like A O P. Again, some countries may have good governance mechanisms, so they may have defined it as part of T O Rs. But in the conventional, the terms of reference of the Board of Directors under the conventional practices might not include safeguarding the interest of the investment account holders. Secondly, even in the conventional, you have independent directors requirements for the listed companies, why? To safeguard the interest of the minority shareholders who have no say. Now, minority shareholders may have only ten percent of the ownership of the institution. Here you are talking about people who have seventy percent of the ownership of the underlying assets of the bank. How do you handle this thing? Just keep, just think of it. So that is the reason that appropriate proper, again, Board of Directors, we have identified what is the responsibility of those charged with governance with regard to that, that is the whole purpose. We are not saying that you appoint a separate Board of Directors for the, for the investment account holders. No, we are just saying that your corporate governance system should integrate the good governance practices to ensure that the interest of the investment account holders is also safeguarded. For that purpose, it is appropriate, there should be appropriate committees, et cetera, and the board and the audit committee should also understand their responsibilities, that's what we are talking about. Thank you very much. Now, this is, this is three thirty-five, three thirty-six in Bahrain. And this is like, you know, a request to all of you to stay connected. We will just be taking a ten minutes break for prayer time. We know that a lot of people are connecting today from Pakistan as well because Central Bank of Pakistan is supporting the initiative. So this is prayer time, like you know, in Bahrain, in Pakistan, in UAE, in, I think, I believe in Oman. All these areas, I think it is prayer time for Assar and the time for Assar is normally limited. So it is, it is very necessary that we take just a ten minutes break for the prayers. I request all of you to keep connected. It's just a short break, those who have prayer time, they can pray, those who have like, you know, they prayed already or there is no prayer time, they can just grab a cup of tea or something. So just we take break, very short break and we continue, Insha Allah. So just we take break, very short break and we continue, Insha Allah.
Now, welcome everybody. I think we should continue the discussion. Uh welcome back everybody, it's more than ten minutes, so I think we should start. Before moving ahead, I think there are a couple of more questions that I first I need to address. Uh there is next comment coming from anonymous attendee, again a request like we do all the time. That kindly, uh it is always better if you put your name. Because we compile all the comments for the working group and the board, so it is always better if we know that comment is coming from which person. So if we request all of the anonymous attendees, if they can kindly put the names. What is the concept of Sharia compliance is achieved by accounting standard rather than the Sharia standard means? Okay, since this investment accounting is very important, so let me try to explain that. Uh again, if this is a discussion that may need one hundred like, you know, different uh uh different examples, but let me state the most simple thing. So for example, I made a profit agreement, profit and loss sharing agreement with uh for example, brother Zahid Hooker. And we decided that I will have forty percent and he will have sixty percent. Now, we made the agreement, I am the working partner, I have forty percent. Now, with regard to the underlying assets, how the profit and loss is to be calculated is dependent on the accounting policies and practices that we apply on recording and reporting the underlying assets. So for example, there is an Ijarah transaction. Asset is not yet delivered, but we make payment, advance payment for purchase of asset. Asset will be delivered, for example, it's a car, it will be delivered after three months. After three months, we will deliver it to the, let's see. And then according to Sharia, our earning right will start. Now, if I don't follow the correct accounting practices under IFRS nine, using effective interest rate method, I will recognize, start recognizing interest on the transaction from day one when I made the payment, rather than the time when I deliver the asset. Now, based on that, I distribute a profit to brother Zahid in the ratio of forty-sixty. Is it Sharia compliant? One example, let's take second example. The second example is that we make an agreement that forty percent is mine, sixty percent is his, I am the working partner. And instead of preparing appropriate accounts with regard to the underlying assets, I had given him an estimate that your estimated profit will be ten percent, so I simply give him ten percent. Without actually making a profit and loss account of the underlying assets or business venture and without calculating the actual profit, without applying the forty-sixty ratio, I gave him return of ten percent. In my personal life, dozens of people have discussed examples like with this with me in the organized Islamic banking sector as well as unorganized common transactions between partners. The first example was how the accounting practices and policies are applied on the underlying asset. The second example is about as to whether appropriate accounts are prepared for the where participatory venture itself to add or the investment pool as we call in the banking before actually distributing the profit. Another example, I did the calculation. Profit came like, you know, in the ratio of twenty-five percent on investment. I have said to brothers eyes, I will give you ten percent. So I apply my ratio, it his profit works out sixteen percent roughly. I still gave him ten percent. Example number four, I said to him that your expected profit is ten percent and total profit was eight percent, his share works out to be five point five percent or so, I still gave him ten percent. These are just few examples, but I would like to tell you that I would repeat that point. The taste of the pudding is in its eating. So it's about the implementation of the contract. So for Sharia compliance of Musharqa, in Muraba, you can have one transaction. Once you do one transaction, you know how much is profit and loss, how you do it. And normally Muraba is on profit only. But what about Musharqa? It is not one transaction. It is about cumulative result coming out of multiple transactions and assets. And after application of appropriate ratios and formulas for profit calculation and if necessary, Hiba reserves and other profit smoothing techniques according to Sharia. After all that, you achieve the level of Sharia compliance. So I insist on this point that on Musharqa, Mudarba, any of the participatory transactions, Sharia compliance is not achieved primarily through the contract because contract is one time. Rather, it is actually achieved through appropriate recording and reporting of transactions and appropriately calculating the profit and loss and distributing it according to Sharia and according to the contract. I hope the question is clear to you. And uh on a lighter note, you know, this is a topic very close to my heart. And at times people say, Umar, you become emotional on this topic and you become like, you know, uh you know, harsh on this topic. So maybe uh you, since you are appearing as anonymous attendee, so on a lighter note, I feel that you didn't want to show your face or show your name. Next point is brother Mohammed Imran. Uh it is needed to safeguard I H R to get better rates as management can manipulate rates while changing weightage in the in the case of Pakistan that S B P implemented seventy-five percent not yet to for general depositors. Okay, uh seventy-five percent is a governance issue. This answers one of the questions raised earlier. One of the questions raised earlier was that uh what that Sharia standard does not mention seventy-five percent or something. Seventy-five percent is a regulatory and governance issues to ensure fairness. This is one of the examples of fairness that can be achieved through governance and obviously through regulated intervention in governance. However, uh when you say about better rates, I can say that our issue is not better rate. Our issue is fairness. So if you say that as working partner, I only take one percent because I want to give high return to the to the investor. It is also not fairness. You might be doing it because you want to match the conventional interest rate for the investor. That is not fair and that is not according to the essence of Islamic finance. So for our issue is not that, okay, who is the, who is getting more and who is getting less? No, we say you should get fair, you should get as per Sharia, you should get as per contract and those things should be governed according to good governance practices, fairness, transparency must be there. You should be very clear and transparent with regard to how you calculate the profit, how you distribute it. Even if you use profit smoothing techniques like Hiba or uh or P R I R R, these should be according to specific rules, these should be according to specific considerations and these should also be always transparent. Brother Taimur Khan is at the point, thank you. Another thing I would like to know is that since the government rose comes after the Sharia standard which are mandatory, are these governance and equitable treatment standards backed by Sharia basis that may apply these applicability for IFIs. Quick answer to that, yes, all our governance standards are are aligned with the Sharia standards. Uh obviously in some areas, they enhance upon them. Uh because Sharia standard sets the Sharia principle and rule, we go beyond in the governance standard to that and at times we identify the fairness and equitable treatment issues as well. Or at time we address the objectives of Sharia related challenges as well. Uh Harvey is backed by Sharia, yes. Every A O P standard is reviewed by a Sharia committee, means other than Sharia standards, all other standards, accounting, auditing, governance and ethics standards, they are reviewed by a committee of Sharia board. Now, that committee has the terms of reference of reviewing all A O P other standards that is technical standards and making sure that they are generally in accordance with Sharia and specifically with in accordance with the A O P Sharia standards. And they are uh entitled to pass on any significant matter to the Sharia board. So it actually happens that some of the significant matters are passed on to the Sharia board for their discussion and decision. So from A O P's perspective, every single standard that we issue have Sharia basis and Sharia backing. There is a comment by from brother Miftawu Dibaba and he's a technical comment regarding investment risk reserve, so I will suggest that we discuss it later. Uh we have comment from Brahim Brothers, Brahim, the Chalam. Again, my apologies if I mispronounce any name. So brother Brahim, okay, Swaleekum Assalam, so you are welcome sir. There is comment from brother Fareed Kakabi, okay, not a question of more or less rates, point is not predetermined rate but return related to real performance. Exactly, brother Fareed, you are to the point, you are exactly on the point. We do not want to insist on, yes, more or less, we want to ensure not predetermined but actual based on calculation and performance and determined according to Sharia principles and rules, according to contractual arrangements and according to fairness and additionally transparent. So the even the process has to be transparent and appropriate disclosures are to be made. Thank you very much, brother Fareed. You are exactly on 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 spot. Other comments I'll discuss later once I take you through, Mashallah, this is a very, you know, interesting subject. Uh whenever we do public hearing on this one, most of the time is taken in the initial discussions and all these theoretical discussions. And uh not even a single time we are able to read the whole standard which is already quite detailed. I'll take you through the scope part now. Scope this of the standard, this standard shall apply to all participative investment instruments issued by an I F I including investment accounts based on Mudarba or similar contracts, including without limitation Musharqa that represent quasi-equity including both high-risk investment accounts and low-risk investment account as well as investments placed by other financial institutions. So uh uh the F I deposits or treasury deposits or treasury placements etcetera are not out of scope for this one. They are part of the scope. Al-Vakala Bilistasmar arrangements co-mingled with restricted investment accounts based on Mudarba or Musharqa. They are subject to this. A participant's investment instrument offered by a part of a capital institution, if the same is subject to classification as quasi-equity. These are unique situations, but these are also subject to this. Of balance sheet assets under management, for example, restricted investment accounts and Al-Vakala Bilistasmar arrangements. Uh they are also subject to requirements of this one. B and D are different in this way that B is Al-Vakala, that is merged or co-mingled with Mudarba, which is practices of some banks particularly in Bahrain because even here Central Bank has required that. So these are, these become quasi-equity. And they are similar to Uriah and for that purpose, while other Vakala may remain off balance sheet according to A O P standards because you do not control them. But either way, it will be applicable on both, the core principles will be applicable on both. So you cannot say, okay, we are doing Vakala, so we are not subject to this standard. You are not, you cannot say that, okay, we don't call them investment account, we call them P L S deposit, we call them deposit, we call them certificate of investment, we call them certificate of Musharqa or anything like that. You cannot say that, okay, since they are not called investment accounts, so they are not subject to it because our scope says that all participatory instruments will be subject to that, including this, this, this. In addition, we say that the standard shall be applicable insofar as suitable to the following, Sukuk or similar instrument based on participatory structure is included by an institution, whether or not being an Islamic financial institution. So even if a Mudarba Sukuk is issued by a company, so it will be subject to the governance requirements of A O P governance standard number twelve. But that is Sukuk governance, but it will also be subject to governance requirements of this standard because of the participatory nature of the underlying structure. Insofar as suitable. It will also be applicable to participant investment funds managed by the Kafal Institution which are not quasi-equity and are kept in a separate like, you know, like off balance sheet. So even for them, insofar as suitable, this will be applicable. Obviously, we might be coming up for specific requirements on governance standard for Sukuk. So once they, those standards, those those standards are come uh some of the requirements will be taken by them. But till that time, there is no specific standard on the Kafal governance. The Kafal participant investment funds for life, the Kafal companies, family, the Kafal companies will be subject to requirements of this one insofar as suitable. Now definitions, uh control definition, I don't want to go in too much detail, but in a nutshell, you control an underlying asset or business if you, if you control the decision. you control an underlying asset or business if you, if you control the decisions, that is the governance part for your benefit in form of variable returns. So if you take decisions for others, then it is not control. If you take decisions but it does not return in a result in a variable return to you, that is profit and loss to you. So for control, one condition is being able to direct the decisions. Number two is having the profit and loss on that. So this is where control from the control perspective, this is primarily an accounting issue, but we have identified in the governance standards as well. Demand investment accounts is simple definition, let me go take you to displaced commercial risk. It refers to the extent of additional risk borne by institutions owners in comparison to the situation whereby with I H assume all commercial risk including credit market equity investment risk as well as risk rate of return risk associated with the underlying asset of the respective investment pool considering the need to match their respective rate of return with the rate of return prevalent in the respective market, including avoidance of losses to be passed on to them. So for example, conventional bank is giving me five percent return if Islamic bank give me four percent return according to an ex CEO of an Islamic bank who is a friend, according to him, our people's faith goes with fifty basis points. So what he meant was that if you give fifty basis point less return than conventional, then people will lose their faith and go to conventional or vice versa on the asset side. So from that perspective, we need to keep in mind that displaced commercial risk is a reality for Islamic banks particularly with regard to low risk investment accounts. Because low risk investment accounts have a safekeeping mindset. When I go to a bank in Bahrain and make a deposit, I am not putting the money at risk to lose money. I am not asking the bank to put my money in high return investments and give me twenty percent return on investment. No, I know the bank will be giving me only three, four percent return at max, but I know that the bank will be investing my money in the avenues which are low risk and will be managing appropriate risk management techniques will be applying this my appropriate risk management techniques to make sure that the risk of loss is minimal and it will the return will generally be according to the market. However, if it is lower than market, what happens? In most situation, the profit equalization reserve or Hiba techniques are used, profit smoothing techniques what we call. So for displaced commercial risk, there is a profit smoothing techniques where are needed and because of those profit smoothing techniques and this risk management, what normally happens is that that technically again displaced commercial risk is a subset of rate of return risk and for displaced commercial risk as well as rate of return risk, the risk management techniques require that you manage it. Hiba is the most easy form and common form that is used, but again at times excessive use of Hiba makes it look like, like you know, pure conventional transactions. So that is the reason that A O P does not recommend Hiba to be used without controls. A O P does not recommend Hiba to be used actually. A O P recommends that still you can use appropriate risk management techniques including maintenance of reserves. External Sharia audit definition coming from other standards, fiduciary capacity is the capacity to act in good faith on behalf of and for the benefit of another party with the duty to preserve trust. This definition is very important, this is coming from other standard, our accounting standard, but this is a very important definition to understand the context of some of the requirements of the standard. Hiba is the voluntary act of payment of money or transfer of an asset to another party without a consideration. Explanation in the specific context of the standard, Hiba generally refers to any amount voluntarily paid transferred by an institution normally out of its shares of profit to I H as a gift to meet the desired level of return on I H funds. Obviously, it includes a compensation of some losses as well. This is again, like you know, again, the question that was raised by our brother earlier, Sharia standard says, yes, Hiba can be given in the case of need if it was not pre-promised. However, how it actually applies is the question. Investment account is a participatory investment instrument, see paragraph five, you commonly kept and operated as a banking account with an Islamic bank or similar financial institution. Investment pool in the specific context of this standard comprises distinct assets whose risks and rewards wholly or proportionately are attributable to the funding provided by respective investors within owner's equity, quasi equity and off balance sheet assets under management of an institution. It is generally a virtual entity and at times a separate reporting entity. This definition is coming from the accounting standard, but it is very fundamental. Investment risk reserve is the amount appropriated by an I F I out of the income arising from assets pertaining to relevant profit and loss taking investors in order to cushion against credit risk, market risk and equity investment risk mainly pertaining to residual future possible losses after impairment and product losses accounted for in line with the requirements of A O P FAS thirty for the respective stakeholders arising from the respective assets and investments. Now, since there was a question about this one specifically, I'll take that question now. Brother Miftawu Dibaba raised this question regarding the investment risk reserve, if a portion is deducted from customer and no risk occurs or if the customer remains with us, will the money be returned to the customer? Two, if the customer terminates their account, will they be paid? They will be paid. If the payment is not made later, who is the owner for that? Brother Miftawu, the point is the way the structure is made is that investment risk reserve is is a form of Takaful, is a form of Tabaru which is kept from the respective investment account holders and is kept for their collective benefit. So individual ownership, while investment risk reserve in the financial statements is owned by the investment account holders as a whole, but it is not individually attributed to one or more of the investment account holders or their classes normally. So what happens that this is kept collectively for their benefit but not in the ownership of individually of them. And so accordingly, if somebody closed the account according to the terms of condition of the account opening, they know that they will be leaving their share of the investment account, investment risk reserve for the benefit of ongoing, like you know, investment account holders. Since the concept of Tansizal Hakmi or the constructive liquidation is applied in profit and loss competition on a monthly basis and when a person leaves the leaves the entity and closes the account, they apply the principle of Takharuj or exit. So considering these principles, effectively their ownership is no more valid on the share of the investment, investment risk reserve. It will be remaining in the benefit of the of the stakeholders. Only thing is if the institution is liquidated, then this will be used for the benefit according to the formula of the respective investment account holders. I hope your question is addressed here. The next point is I F I definition is already covered, only thing that we emphasize again and again is Islamic financial institution includes windows according to A O P definition. So this applies on Islamic finance windows as well. Monetary asset definition is here coming from other standards mainly for the purpose of tradability within the transfer, transfers between pools. Mudarba is a profit oriented participation, the main definition is coming from the Sharia, Sharia standard, but it was adopted and adapted in the accounting standard. So this one is coming from the accounting standard. Then often balance sheet assets under management include assets held managed and administered or otherwise dealt with an arrangement that gives an institution a fiduciary responsibility but not control. So if you have a fiduciary responsibility, which means that you are managing on behalf of others, but you do not control, which means that even if you have a decision making, that is for the benefit of others and on the or it is limited decision making and the net benefit is not there. Just a second. My apologies for the disturbance, please. So if you own the assets, you put them on balance sheet. If you don't own or control, I would say own is not the right word, sorry, my apologies. If you control the assets, you put them on balance sheet. If you don't control, you don't put on balance sheet. If you control, what is the condition that fiduciary, like you know, your responsibility is, is like, you know, for the purpose of governance and you have the risk and reward on the underlying assets or ownership. How to put the, let me put the example. So for example, unrestricted investment account, you have co-mingling of your own funds, you have unlimited decision making, you have the decision making right because it is unrestricted on behalf of others, it results in net profits and losses for you as well because you have co-mingled your funds as well or you have the right of co-mingling. At times you may not have co-mingled, but what happens if that if a customer comes and withdraws their money, you will have to bring in money from other sources. So technically, this risk part remains there. So from that perspective, unrestricted investment accounts are on balance sheet. Restricted investment accounts, Wakala on the other hand are generally off balance sheet unless Wakala is not co-mingled with the investment accounts, investment accounts or the Mudarba based investment accounts. Maybe there might be a little bit complication in my answer because it is a complicated issue. This is more about the accounting issue, so I will not go in more detail. At this point of time, we have a long way to go in for this standard. So just let me try to stick to what we have. Now let me take the question from Brother Sayed Imtiaz Abbas Hussain. How A O P can give more emphasis on good intention and Nia and integrity, honesty and performing persons and Sharia principles and rule and good governance practice? Brother Sayed Imtiaz Abbas Hussain, you need to refer to our code of ethics for Islamic finance professionals that actually addresses that part and that is the reason that we always say that essence of the Sharia compliance comes through the values and ethics. And we have our code of ethics for Islamic finance professionals and additionally, we have a governance standard on integration of ethical code with the governance and and management practices. So these are the standards that you need to refer to. The A O P has all the emphasis on this part. Brother Zahid is there or not because there is a question and that question is specifically addressed to him.
Brother Zahid, he has another meeting, so he won't be able to join back.
Brother Mohammed Ayaz has raised a point for Brother Zahid, it is very specific to Pakistan. So Brother Ayaz, it would be good if you can approach Brother Zahid directly or if you can, we can talk offline after today's discussion, but further discussion with regard to specific Pakistan constitutional issue would not be appropriate for today's discussion for the benefit of all participants. So then we move ahead to the next section. Okay, sorry, within this section, I think these are discussed already. Let me see if there is, okay, sorry, this is an important definition. Participatory investment instruments in the specific context of the standard include all instruments particularly including investment accounts whereby the investors are entitled to share take the profit and bear the risk of loss and are entitled to a residual interest in the underlying asset or business commonly referred to an investment pool. In line with Sharia principles, in line with Sharia principles, the rules, these are, these are normally based on Mudarba but also include structures based on Musharaka, Wakala, Bilishtasmar and certain hybrid structures. Participatory investment instruments may be divided into two main categories. First, where the institution controls underlying assets which are classified as quasi equity. Second, where the institution does not control the underlying asset and manages the same in a fiduciary capacity, only in a fiduciary capacity which are classified as off balance sheet. Other definitions are relevant to these things, so I will not be going for that. There is a profit and loss computation period definition which is normally a month like whatever is the profit and loss computation period for the respective institution applies here. Profit equalization reserve is the amount of amount appropriated by an I F I out of the income arising from the asset pertaining to profit and loss taking investors in order to maintain a certain level of return on investment. So the difference between I R R and P E R, number one, I R R is for the investment risks, that is, it's on for the asset side. So you need to calculate the credit risk, market risk, operational risk and equity investment risk on the asset side instruments. And on the other hand, profit equalization reserve is primarily for rate of return risk. Rate of return risk is impacted by the asset performance as well. So to that extent, investment risk reserve also serves the rate of return risk challenge. Together, to a P E R and I R R, we use the term risk reserves as a whole, FAS thirty-five where this is this issue in detail and some of the issues are also addressed in this standard. One more difference between I R R and P E R, I R R is normally taken out before charging the Mudarib fee, Mudarib share out of the total assets of the investment pool while P E R is allocated after the like, you know, from the total proportion including the Mudarib share proportion. P S Rs, the profit sharing ratios in this standard, the way we have used it, it includes the because there are different approaches towards the mechanism of profit computation. Some of the institution use a weightage mechanism plus Mudarib share, some use different Mudarib shares, some apply different profit sharing ratios. So by whatever name called, the mechanism of profit share allocation is 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 used in this standard as P S Rs. So even what we call weightages and what we call Mudarib share and what we call the the profit sharing ratios of different partners etc, whatever, whatever variables are used like, you know, for the purpose of calculation of profit and loss allocation between partners will be within the definition of P S R. Public interest institution are generally listed institutions and retail institutions. So any institution having listed securities or any institution having more than ten thousand sort of investment accounts will generally be considered in that. Quasi equity is 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 again accounting definition that is Uriya and others are normally considered quasi equity. According to A O P, quasi equity is a classification between liability and equity because they are, they have the characteristics of equity, but they are not liability. According to I F I, generally, these are considered as liability. Some of the definitions I'll skip here. I I think not all of them will be relevant. Tangibility requirement will be according to the respective as respective standard, Sharia standard, particularly Sharia standard on then. Now, very important issue is about transfer of assets. In the specific context of the standard is the transfer of assets from one investment pool to another whether on balance sheet or off balance sheet by way of either sale, exchange, investment clearing or other, for example, Hiba in line with a contractual arrangement or through reconstitution of multiple investment pools immediately following their constructive liquidation in line with the requirements of Sharia principles and rules. So we believe that transfer of asset between investment pool to manage return or for managing other purposes is one of the most significant areas which need governance and control. So that is why we have put in this definition. Asta Mariko, my apologies, I think there was a disconnection issue. Can you all hear me? Brother Islam, can you hear me? If can, can anybody, yeah, okay, thank you very much, brothers. Okay, thank you very much. So let me share the screen again, my apologies, I think there is a problem at at our server. I have connected from a different connection, but I think even our colleagues are not there. Let's continue the discussion. So I was mentioning about core principles of governance and the structure of the standard. So structure of the standard is about initially we identified the core principles and then we have gone through the key processes. So let's first go through quickly the key project, key core principle. These core principles in lie are in line with the principles that are assigned in different other standards of A O P. These core principles in line are in line with the principles that are assigned in different other standards of AOFI on the governance side. So Sharia compliance, fairness, fiduciary responsibility. That is, that includes like you know, being really fair and trustworthy. The accountability, the risk management, internal controls and transparency and disclosures. Responsibility, investment strategy, having a proper investment strategy, we are going to discuss that part a little bit later. Proportionality principle, depending on the type of the institution, what, what, what flexibilities can be provided. And code of conduct and ethics, that what are the code of conduct, code of conduct and ethical requirements in line with AOFI as well as I F S B standards. So this is, I would say that this is the summary or the crux of the standard. From where all the detailed principles that we are going to discuss later are coming up. Then in case of high risk investment accounts, because high risk investment accounts are more subject to more risk. So there are some additional requirements, including transparency and disclosure, because there are additional transparency and disclosure requirements. And there are some specific requirements with regard to investment strategy to address the risk related to high risk investment account. Then we have identified the core, core, core organs of governance and management that are, that are, that have responsibility with regard to my governance and management of investment accounts. These include those charged with governance, that is normally the board of directors and its committees, including a specific investment accounts committee that is established in line with the requirement of the standard. Governance organs reporting to those charged with governance, including internal audit function and internal Sharia audit function. Sharia supervisory board, management, including senior management and respective management committees. And compliance department and risk management department and Sharia compliance department. And as well as external auditors and external Sharia auditors. I think sister Alia, if you can make a note of it, after, after five Sharia compliance department, there should be, sorry, after four, there should be add. Okay, after four, there should be and before five.
Yes.
Okay, then there is a general requirement that organs of governance and management have to fulfill their requirements, their responsibilities in line with this standard in particular and other standards. Then part B requires that there must be a appropriate strategy and policy framework. This part B is a very comprehensive section where we have identified that there has to be a requirement of I A's strategy and policy framework. And this is what we are saying that if you are establishing an Islamic financial institution and want to offer investment accounts, you need to have it in place before you start taking investment accounts. Again, for sure, for the existing banks, this need to be done as soon as possible. But for the, for, we believe that this is something which is fundamental at the beginning. So an appropriate investment accounts and strategy and I A, strategy and policy framework must be in place. I think we have seen couple of questions coming up, so let me try to, okay, sorry, these are about the, the voice because I was asking people. Thank you very much everybody for that confirmation. Brother Imtiaz Abbas Hussein again has a point, the basic rule for Islamic finance is that parties share losses or share profit as contrast with conventional finance. Your parties always get profit, but this standard denies this rule through the creation of distribution for P R and I R R. Is that true? Brother Imtiaz Abbas Hussein, I think you are missing the point. Sharia does not say that you always like, you know, you manage profits and losses properly, there is no harm in that. What is the concept of takaful? What, if you just go to the principle of hadiths, that, that a common hadiths that is always referred to for the benefit of takaful. That there was a Sahabi who actually asked for, like you know, the Nabi, asked to Nabi Green, Sallallahu Alaihi Salam, the, like you know, I'm, I'm, I'm explaining in my wording. That should I tie the camel or have tavakkal allah. He, he said, first you tie the camel and then have tavakkal allah. So tying the camel itself means that you first apply the appropriate risk management techniques and then tavakkal allah. So there is no harm in, in applying Sharia compliant, appropriate risk management techniques. Nobody want to go for losses. Even if I want to do have everything halal, but I just don't want to go for losses. Instead of giving up my money to for losses to somebody, I would rather give it in charity. But if I want to go in business, I, I want appropriate risk management mechanism in place to ensure that I have minimum of losses. What is harm in that? Why you assume that Sharia is against this concept? Sharia allows you to apply all the possible risk management techniques. Just go for the story of, in the Quran, you know, the story of Hazrat Yusuf al-Islam. That is, you know, Asmaul Asas by Quran. It's all risk management. He asked to like, you know, preserve Allah, the, the, the grains. He asked them to be preserved for the period of like famine. So there is no harm if you create appropriate reserves so that the bad times are managed properly. There is no harm in that, rather it is more, I would say it is a requirement of Sharia. I, what I'm against and what I believe our governance board is generally against is use of Hiba. I can tell you P R and I R R are wallah, very good things. They are not bad things. Hiba is bad thing. Hiba means that you pay out of your pocket to compensate for the conventional rate or compensate for losses. For me, it is bad. And, and one of the scholars sometime back, he said that this is Hiba on the weight of riba in poem, in poetry. So because Hiba and riba look like similar words as well. So try to understand that Hiba is bad, absolutely bad. Because Hiba means you simply compensate out of your pocket for every junk the returns or to compensate for losses. This makes Islamic finance similar to conventional. But profit equalization and investment risk reserves are good Sharia compliant practices that should be promoted. And this standard actually promote that you should apply appropriate risk management practices rather than reverting to the less preferred. Again, I'm not saying Hiba is haram, I'm just saying that it makes similarity to conventional. But where, but creating P R and I R R is not nowhere close to conventional, conventional never have P R and I R R. Conventional give you fixed return. Hiba makes you give fixed return. But P R and I R R actually help you managing your returns on a overall long term basis in a risk adverse manner. Which is perfectly alright and something good to do. So let's move ahead. So then we, in the development of I A's strategy and policy framework, we mentioned that it should be done beforehand, before you actually start work. It should be done in line with the governance standards and relevant statutory requirements and Sharia principles and rules, particularly the AOFI Sharia standards. The, the, the policy framework shall be developed in line with the requirements of this standard as well. Sister Alia, if you can just make a note of it, some, some partial overlapping between paragraph ten and eleven, I think we, okay, it's about development and consideration, my apologies. This is okay. In, in this, this should be vetted by the, vetted by the Sharia board and approved by the, those charged with governance, that is board of directors. The policy, the investment account strategy and policy framework should include H R I A in addition to L R I A and it should be developed in a manner that. Practices of H R I A are, are promoted, good proper risk management practices in line with Sharia and risk appetite of the investment account holders are properly established there. Significant components of investment account strategy and policy framework include the following. Number one, solicitation of funds, investment account and, and, and respective prerequisites. Risk management policy, in the creation of investment pool and identification and segregation of funds and assets. Coming link of funds related requirements, priority of investment of fund, determination of P S Rs and weightages. And, and their announcement, movement and transfer of assets between investment pools, tangibility criteria. Profit and loss computation, attribution and distribution, profit smoothing and capital protection techniques and maintenance of risk reserves, promotional gifts and prizes, investment account takaful schemes. That is what we generally say, call as deposit insurance. Termination and early redemption related challenges, transparency and disclosure related requirements, internal controls related requirements, et cetera. So this is a very comprehensive section. Now in this section, we address about each of the item that I have identified above. The, for each of the components, this is, and this section provides the requirements. Again, as it is a very long standard, I will not be going through word by word on this section, but I would be requiring some of the key requirements with regard to these. So even for the solid, before solicitation of fund, appropriate requirements with regard to the, it's the product structure and the policy and the strategy framework should be there. Risk management policy should be aligned with the other AOFI governance standards, I F S B standards and within the Sharia requirement, within the terms of Sharia. The risk management policy should include with regard to management of rate of return risk and displaced commercial risk. This may include creating reserves, et cetera. Again, I insist again and again, Hiba is not a preferred practice from our governance board perspective. Hiba is acceptable by Sharia standards because of a necessity. It is, it should not be a common practice and it should always be controlled. We know that some of the regulators have started putting controls on, on, on Hiba and this standard also proposes some controls on Hiba. Then the risk management policy components, et cetera, what is needed, et cetera, particularly with regard to different type of risk. Particularly with regard to the liquidity risk, et cetera, also it addresses that these not to be, need to be mentioned. And what are the approaches towards managing those risks, including, including profit smoothing techniques, these should be covered in this, this section. Then with regard to the creation of investment pools and identification and segregation of funds and assets, that is the next section. You know, this is, this is, again, I would say that this is the most important factor to ensure Sharia compliance. That appropriate investment pools are identified, the assets and liabilities are, are from day one identified according to the respective pools. The investment account holders related assets should be clearly distinguished and appropriately identified and segregated from those owned by the shareholders. Unless those are coming. So all these things and including, we have put some of the other conditions as well, like we suggested that investment pools should be limited in number. Some banks have a single pool, but again, single pool have some certain issues because there are currency related issues which cannot be managed by a single pool normally. Unless the currencies are packed together. The suggestion is that short term time bound pools should generally not be there because there are some Sharia principles and rules that may be non-compliant in those situation, including the buyback. Authorities of related functions should be identified and, and creation of pool, et cetera, should be subject to appropriate governance principle. It should not be that, okay, finance department makes five pools every day. It should happen actually according to a proper risk management methodology and approach of the creation of pools, et cetera. Should be properly documented. Again, there is a comment from brother Sayed Imtiaz Abbas Hussein, I agree with you, brother Shomar, yes, P R and I R R better than Hiba. I used to ask Islamic banks to pay Hiba when profit deduction Islamic finances investment. Thank you very much, brother Sayed Imtiaz Abbas Hussein, your comments are always very valuable and we highly appreciate your presence in the public hearings and your kind comments. In, then, there, there are some other points as well, like restricted investment accounts. Each category of restricted investment account must be maintained in separate investment pool because according to their nature and should be appropriately reinforced. High risk investment accounts should be kept separately from low risk investment accounts and they should be according to the target asset classes and risk appetite. Shall be kept in one or more separate investment pools. So these are again, it is very important, but okay, let me just identify one very important point here. That appropriate accounting of each investment pool as a virtual enterprise is a must. That is the crux. And that is where I said in the beginning that Sharia compliance of musharka and mudarba is achieved through accounting. If you don't do proper accounting from the investment pool. All the Sharia compliant contracts are useless. Because Sharia compliant contracts are saying that you will be sharing profit and loss. You don't determine share the profit and loss appropriately, then it means that you lose all of it. You lose the main essence of Sharia compliance here. Creation of investment pool and identification and segregation of funds of facets is also very important that for pool creation, there should be a proper governance process, there should be controls. And there should be appropriate documentation with regard to each of the pool, including the characteristics about the asset classes, about the risk appetite, et cetera, income stream, et cetera, that are there. Underlying Sharia compliant contract for each of the pool should be clearly identified, the documentation should be referred to. And summary of profit loss computation and distribution mechanism should be identified, including P S Rs, weightages. Changes in mechanism of changes in P S R and weightages, limits on, limits on P S Rs and weightages in line with this standard or other regulatory requirements. And the expectation of Hiba and limits on Hiba, the creation of revert reserves, et cetera. Then accounting policies and related aspects of the, of the, of the respective investment pool, particularly where the accounting policies are different from the common policies. Those should be like, for example, how to charge provisions on the pools. Are they going to follow the normal accounting policy for charging provision or impairment allowances on the pool or something, different approaches to be followed. So these type of things are to be identified. One of the most significant non-compliance of Sharia that we have seen is that at times multiple currency pools are mixed in one and returns are given. And according to the respective currency which results in a situation that you actually protect the capital. If you, it's always better to keep each current investment pool, in each currency deposits or investment accounts under different investment pool. But if it is necessary to bring them in one, it is this requirement of Sharia that you convert. Convert them into the currency of shirka of that pool. So the currency of the pool need to be identified, which means that the capital guarantee that is created through keeping multiple currencies in one pool is not acceptable generally. It's a complicated issue, I cannot go in detail, coming link of the owner's equity, et cetera, and what other, or what other, like you know, participatory stakeholders funds, like for example, vakala vilastasmar funds, if they are coming with mudarba, et cetera. So what other funds are coming, any specific liquidation mechanism. So these are the requirements for the, for the fund and then coming link requirements are included in, in here that even the, what can be coming and what cannot be coming. And if coming, what, like you know, for example, current accounts will be considered equity, et cetera. So these coming link requirements along with further details should be identified, obviously further controls have been identified here. Then we have requirements about priority of investment of funds that who have the priority, the owners or the shareholder or the, or the investment account holders or a specific class of investment account holders, particularly if there is excess liquidity. Determination of P S Rs and weightages and for distribution of profit, their, their identification, how they are identified, how, and they must be fair, they must be transparent. Their determination should be according to appropriate approach in line with the investment and investment I A, strategy and policy framework, et cetera. Then about the, about the determination of P S R should have some limits here. Now this is an important point that where we are saying that in case of L R I A, the maximum weight is applied to a class Y shall not be in excess of two point five times of the minimum weight is applied to other class of investment accounts. So this is very important that we have put in some weightages. Actually, this whole section about determination of P S R and weightages might need a separate public hearing. But you know, the time is limited, so again, we expect that all of you should have read the standard before coming for this meeting. But still, if you have any questions about this one, because these are very complicated issues, particularly this difference in weightages. To, to what extent a difference is justifiable, to what extent a difference may not be justifiable according to the fair practices. So these are some very important elements addressed here. For H R I A, the policy requirements are slightly different from the L R I A. Then we have the movement and transfer of asset between investment pool related requirements. There are Sharia related requirements as well, most important of which is that the new Bevden standard does not allow hypothetical bundling. Now there is, for example, you cannot transfer a murabha receivable or a tawaruk receivable from one pool to another pool without applying, without applying the par value. If you transfer it at par value, then it means there is no return thereon. This is the situation that is actually happening in all the banks across the globe. We have seen lot of examples like this in different markets because people don't realize that they are transferring debt against debt. Or which technically results in a situation that we are doing riba inside of the institution. Outside, we are saying, oh, we are riba free and we are offering you riba free deposits, but internally, we are transferring debt for debt which tend amount to riba. So again, the requirements of Bel Then standard on transfer of debt are is very fundamental for the transfer of movement between the assets. Particularly, the issue is that hypothetical bundling which is done at times, you know, because some of the people don't even care about bundling, they just transfer receivables, that is absolutely like, you know, unacceptable. But some people actually create a hypothetical bundle. Now, the current standard on Bel Then says that hypothetical bundling like this is not acceptable. Which means that transfer of receivables and receivables of Murabah or Tawaruk or other form of debt is not uh not beneficial or possible for the purpose of uh for the purpose of uh uh inter-transfer between of assets between the pool. Again, for this transfer, there should be appropriate documentation, there should be appropriate control, there should be some policy clear about what need to be applied. When the assets are applied, what value need to be applied, should they should be transferred at fair value to make sure fairness between the parties? If fair value is not applied, then what value is applied and according to what principles it is applied and what is the the transparency requirement for that and who is going to safeguard the interest of different stakeholders in that? These are all challenges that are identified with regard to the movement and transfers. With regard to the tangibility criteria, I already touched upon this issue, so this explains it properly that what, how you actually apply the tangibility criteria for the purpose of pools making pools acceptable. Even putting money in a pool and taking out from it needs tangibility. And then transferring of asset between one pool to another requires tangibility. So these are tangibility considerations which are fundamental for Sharia compliance. And again, I would answer the same thing. This you cannot ensure unless you don't do appropriate accounting. I insist again. This Sharia compliance again require appropriate accounting and this is one of the reason that I insist on my point that particularly in the participatory transactions Sharia compliance is achieved through accounting. Then we have the requirements related to profit and loss computation, attribution and distribution. Uh what are the policies of allocating expenses, what are how you, what are the timing and attribution and distribution of profits? What is the profit and loss computation period, what are the accounting policies that are applied for profit and loss computation purposes? Uh what are the expenses that are allocated and what is their basis, what are the losses and provisions and allowances that are allocated and what is the basis? If these are not allocated, is it actually acceptable as per Sharia or not? All these challenges are addressed here. Generally, again, accounting addresses some of these significant issues, temporary fair value losses and gains, whether they are adjusted for the purpose of profit and loss distribution or not. Uh these are all huge challenges that are there with regard to the profit and loss computation, attribution and distribution. Uh then I'll take you to the next section that is related to the profit smoothing and capital protection techniques. Since I've already talked about in this one, I'm not going to go in detail, but we we have justified that there are some situations where proper profit smoothing techniques are needed and what should be the approach towards that and what should be uh like, you know, the the policy framework components that should be included here. Again, for Hiba, we have suggested that Hiba should be and should not be used as a common uh or the first step towards profit smoothing and rather Hiba should be used on on need basis only. Uh and secondly, Hiba should be subject to maximum limits. It should not be that, okay, whatever is the difference will meet by Hiba. Again, I would say that even this profit smoothing and capital protection techniques itself is a standard in itself. So again, like, you know, it might need separate, like, you know, roundtables on discussing these, but some of these we have been discussing in the past when we were developing F S thirty five. And some of these things obviously have been discussed in earlier public hearings as well. Promotional gifts and prizes, we recently issued the accounting standard on that part because again, we have a Sharia standard on that part, but there are practical issues in offering these. So again, we have put some of the like, you know, the the purpose of this section is to ensure that compliance of the governance requirements that are for the Sharia requirements that are there and again for ensuring the ensuring the fairness in the process. Uh Sharia compliant deposit insurance scheme, what we call as in investment accounts, the Kafal scheme. We consider that as a part of the couple risk man of a risk management measure that the Kafal scheme should be acceptable, but it has to be Sharia compliant. You should not be resorting to the conventional schemes. And even the regulator should try to bring in Sharia compliant options within the uh within their own deposit insurance framework for Islamic financial institutions. Then we have transparency and disclosure requirements which refer to, again, we have requirements here, but it also refer to the financial accounting standards of U F E and also refers to certain relevant I F S B standards. There is a section towards the end about the transparency and disclosure as well, so this one refers to those requirements as well. Uh then obviously, there should be requirement with regard to the like, you know, those charged with governance that they have to be, they have to be reviewing and approving eventually the investment I A strategy and for policy framework. Uh I'll skip couple of sections here. Again, we have put in here responsibilities with regard to the respective organs. The first one is about those charged with governance and then we have the requirements related to management, requirements related to Sharia supervisory board and requirements related to Sharia compliance department. Now, part C is about pre commencement consideration, which says that implementation of I S policy and policy, strategy and policy framework and other requirements of the standard should be ensured before commencement. Now, I will not be going on point by point, but some of the important things. So first thing, H R. You need to have appropriate human resources available to manage this one. You cannot just go and solicit funds and you start doing this thing without having properly trained staff who can actually handle the requirements of Sharia requirements of accounting requirements of governance applicable on these areas. Let me just see if we have any questions. I can see only one question coming up here. Uh brother Mohammed Imran has said receivables can be transferred along with tangible assets. Brother Mohammed Imran, uh this is what I was trying to explain. Uh this has been fatwa of individual Sharia boards and majority of the Islamic banks. U F E Sharia standard fifty nine on on Bel Then that I was referring to. It does not allow hypothetical bank bundling. So if I say I transfer one Ijarah one Murabah, okay, even if they can be transferred, but what value they will be transferred? Par value only, not the net value, okay? If you say that you are creating a whole bundle and you are transferring them, okay, that bundle on a hypothetical basis is not acceptable according to the new S S fifty nine. S S fifty nine says that you need to create an entity for that purpose. If you don't create an entity, you cannot do hypothetical transfer of debt because this is a pure form of interest. That you transfer a debt against receivable or cash for lesser or higher amount of money. This is what creates a debt situation. Uh Reba, Reba situation. And that is the reason that S S fifty nine has taken a strong stance on that. Now, for me, your point is valid. According to certain scholars, they do not insist on having a proper bundling. Okay, it is according to their fatwa, it might be approved in your respective institution and all that, but the new view of Sharia standard fifty nine, again, it's not new, it's several years back. It says that hypothetical bundling for this purpose is not acceptable. This is what is addressed in the new transfer of asset standard by U F E also and it is addressed here. Again, U F E's governance standards and accounting standards are always to be read with the relevant Sharia standard. So we create a reference to Sharia standard, Sharia standard says that you need to have an entity to create a bundle, otherwise just saying, oh, I just add these two to make a bundle, that is not acceptable. So then we need to have human resources and obviously the training is also needed for them. Then I T infrastructure, that is a fundamental requirement that there must be a proper I T infrastructure. Without a proper I T infrastructure, you can never have investment accounts according to Sharia. Uh obviously, it should have all the capability of the Sharia requirements, contractual requirements, accounting requirements etcetera. And if if possible, I D infrastructure should be like, you know, preferably it should be certified that it is capable of doing this part. So this certification is a requirement of this new standard that the core banking solution or the I T module that address the investment accounts must be certified for that purpose. Uh then we move to the next area, consideration at the stage of account opening. This section actually record put all the requirements related to the minimum contents of contract and account opening form. A lot of requirements you will see that are missed out by account opening forms in some of the some of the institutions. These are identified clearly, including things related to risk management, including things related to risk reserves etcetera. So these are all requirements that are identified as minimum requirement for all investment accounts. The next section requires certain additional disclosures applicable to high risk investment accounts and restricted investment accounts which are additional disclosures to be made at the time of account opening. And obviously, in addition to that, the relevant K Y C, M L and C F T issues need to be addressed. Then ongoing considerations. This is this section again is very important section of this standard where uh where if there are any changes in I A for strategy and policy framework, those are to be addressed properly. Uh before beginning of the P L C period, if there is a P S R change or weighted change that need to be identified in a transparent manner, properly communicated etcetera. There must be existing exit option also, if somebody does not agree for the P S R changes. Uh transfers, arbitrary transfers from investment pool during a P L C period should be avoided. Periodic computation and attributable of attribution of profit and losses should be according to appropriate requirements on governance, Sharia compliance, proper calculation, proper allocation of expenses, proper allocation of allowances etcetera. Uh then obviously, transfer to or from P R and transfer to and from I R R are necessary. P R before the Mudarib share and I R R after the Mudarib share. I R R relating only to the asset side remaining related to the to the investment pool and P R on overall basis, including the Mudarib share. Uh then uh amount of Hiba, which should be according to our standard, it should be only in rare circumstances. It should not be a common practice, but again, if it is necessary, that it can be there. Uh periodic competition and attribution includes the the application of weightages and P S R instead of weightages. Uh some of the requirements about about the percentage of percentage like or times. They are to be applied in a way that by use of different mechanism, you do not bypass the requirement. Okay, at the end of the P L C period, obviously, this whole periodic competition part, uh we have provided appendix B and C with regard to the profit and loss computation. And with regard to the reserve part also, appendix is provided. Uh there is comment coming up, let me see, uh this is receivables on par value and tangible with discount, it is like assets light concept. Uh brother Imran, uh let's uh let's uh I agree to two points. Number one, there are some relaxations in Sharia available. So yes, wherever that relaxation is available, that should be applied. Uh but for even when you combine them, when you combine them, that is still requires as per Bel Then standard that you must have. First, you need to have an entity for that for asset light structure. And secondly, you need to have fifty one percent of tangible asset. Now, fifty one percent of tangible asset and the receivable at par. Now, what happens? People try to cover total profits out of receivable, which means or at times they try to partially even even guarantee the capital through receivables. So what happened through through the sale price and you know, sale price element? So what happens that you need to apply on the gross receivable, the ratio need to be applied on gross receivable. Let's be clear, Sharia does not allow trade of debt at values different than par value because it opens the door for interest, rather it tend amount to interest. From any proper methodology to avoid that thing is acceptable by Sharia, which is identified in S S fifty nine and also identified in the uh exposure draft of S S sixty two. But anything beyond that is actually playing with numbers and playing with papers. And to be to be honest, playing with people's faith. So we have to be very, very careful about application of these things. Uh we have a comment from brother Pavel Elekkin. Dear Mr. Omar, what is the most common base for profit distribution in Mudarba contract and industry when Islamic banks has Rabul Mal, ex Rabul Mal? Is it based on gross profit or net profit? Is it possible to calculate profit on cash basis? Uh question number one. Uh when the bank is Rabul Mal, this issue is addressed in our participatory ventures accounting uh standard on which we conducted public hearings recently. Uh the participatory venture standard says that number one, you can apply a gross or net basis according to the accounting policies that you have followed, but some of the expenses must be there which are an element. So you cannot say that we'll do only on revenue basis. You can do on gross profit basis or net profit basis according to the contractual agreement, that is number one. Number two, with regard to the calculation of profit on cash basis, you need to agree on the accounting policies. Yes, it is acceptable that you can have profit and loss calculation on cash basis, that is acceptable by Sharia and that is acceptable by participatory ventures accounting standard as well, but you need to agree the accounting policies. So you apply the accounting policy. So you say that my accounting policy for the purpose of this participatory venture or this investment pool says that we will be doing only on cash basis. So even like, for example, accruals we will ignore. Uh for example, fair value changes we will ignore, we'll just go on cash basis and all that. That is acceptable fully, except for one thing, that this should not be used as a means for avoiding actual losses. So you cannot stand up and say, okay, we will not charge losses there till that time. Uh like, you know, like, you know, again, this is one of the example that we have given in this one that if in an investment pool there are investment losses, the according to F S thirty, whatever investment losses are there, they should be identified. Cash basis is fully acceptable, I can tell you. There is no harm in cash basis. But when you apply the accrual basis, you cannot say that we will apply general accrual basis, but we will not take fair value losses or we will not take like, you know, uh we will not take the actual losses on investment. However, temporary fair value losses, you can have accounting policy for that. These all issues are addressed in this standard as well as the accounting standard on investment accounts as well as in more detail in the participatory venture because your question is more related to the participatory venture where bank is Rabul Mal. So from for that one, we have put in more appropriate requirements in the participatory venture exposure draft. The standard is towards finalization. Within this year, it will be finalized. I think we have conducted already two or three public hearings. I'm not sure whether there is another public hearing or not. But I would request our team to kindly provide you like, you know, details if our remaining public hearing is there on that participatory venture standard. Payment of due profits is another important area that that I mean unjustified delay in calculation of profits and payment of due profits should be avoided and if there is a delay, then the amount should be considered reinvested. And there are some other significant areas here, including constructive liquidation and other challenges which are there. Uh what happens in case of distribution of profit on account etcetera? These are also identified, the issue of unclaimed unclaimed amounts is there. Uh then the ongoing responsibilities of those charged with governance, Sharia board and Sharia compliance department etcetera are identified in this section. Then we move to part F, that is considerations on redemption of investment. Uh there are the like, you know, there are multiple situation. One is where you have redemption of full withdrawal at the end of a P L C profit loss competition period or when you have redemption of full withdrawal during the continuity of a period. So these are the situations because if it is a partial withdrawal, normally partial withdrawal will result in every, you know, weighted average calculations and all that. So that doesn't impact, but full withdrawal, closure of account or complete redemption of a participatory investment instrument is what require our exit. Now, this section requires puts the puts the requirements with regard to the exit, in what form these are actually happening and what would be the requirements, general requirements in line with Sharia uh on the basis of which this final calculation or redemption etcetera will be done. on the basis of which this final calculation or redemption, et cetera, will be done. The the more significant challenges are termination and early redemption of a time-bound investment account. So that, for example, I invested for five years. Then what happens if I take out my money after three years? What are the allowed adjustments for that and what are the adjustments that are not allowed? And there are certain unique situations. So for example, I invested, you gave me weighted of eighty, weighted of eighty percent. Now, what happens that you reduce my weighted to sixty percent? Can I be allowed to exit here? If I, if I say, okay, I want to exit because you are reducing my weighted, you will say, okay, because you are, you are exiting. We will, we will take out your profit that was given to you in the past. There are some unfair practices of Islamic finance. I'm just giving one example, but some of these examples that are because these are coming like conventional practices. So some of these are actually addressed in this section and the other sections related to early withdrawals and the changes of and of weightages, et cetera. Particularly this attribution of adjusted past profits, et cetera. We have addressed all this. Next section is about the liquidation of an institution. Again, this is one of the sections that I would say is a standard in itself. Because before before that, there is no Sharia guidance, accounting guidance or regulatory guidance available for the liquidation of an Islamic financial institution. What would be the, what would be the sequence? Because again, you know, it's a legal challenge. And we have tried to address this issue as to how it applies in case of Islamic financial institution. So God forbid, an Islamic financial institution is going towards liquidation. In what manner that liquidation will be applied according to the contractual and Sharia requirements? So this section is, as I said, it's a small section, but it is by itself a very important section and it might be considered even as standard in itself. Part H is about transparency and disclosure requirements. I do not want to go into much details, but as a whole, these are like, you know, requirements that are there to ensure transparency and fairness and to avoid, you know, extraordinary burden on the investment account holders. There are a couple of things very important, which are like the auditors' requirements, that auditors have to make sure that these are the appropriate adequacy of profit and loss computation and attribution is there. I think sister, I think we have created a cross-reference here to the framework of auditing standard. Sister, Sister Alia, if you can make a note of it, on ED here, fifty three ED, there is no bracket. It's just, you need, just need to check if it's a typo error here in the presentation only or in the standard. That is number one. Number two, we created a reference here, but we need to make sure that SO double A one also creates a reference to this point. Okay?
Sure.
Just need to make sure that both have a cross-reference. So this one has a reference, but that one should also have a cross-reference here. Then we have requirements for external Sharia audit, that external Sharia audit should also be like, you know, addressing this one. Again, this one, I think we need to check the standard number six should be referred, not not general SO double A one. So I again would say that this one we need to check on one twenty eight. Okay? In the Sharia board report, the new standard on governance standard on Sharia supervisory board review and report has like has been issued recently. In December, we have issued the final standard. That standard actually includes a specific aspect of reporting on the investment accounts. I think Sisters, Ali, again, here we need to create a cross-reference to that standard as well, because that standard is now final. The point is that Sharia supervisory board in its annual report must have a specific reference to the investment accounts, et cetera, that they have fulfilled their responsibility with regard to that. Then we have, then we have a requirement suggested about Sharia compliance and fiduciary rating. We have our governance standard number ten, which considers that Islamic banks and financial institutions should generally not be subject to credit rating, but they should be subject to Sharia compliance and fiduciary rating. So here we have created a cross-reference and we say that an institution shall preferably secure a Sharia compliance and fiduciary rating for investment accounts. It's not a mandatory requirement, but it's a preferred requirement that if you offer investment accounts, you should have a Sharia compliance and fiduciary rating, which will take into consideration the requirements of this standard as well. And with regard to unique instruments that you offer like material HRIA, RIA, et cetera. For those, you should also consider obtaining a specific Sharia compliance and fiduciary rating for the instrument under the requirements of GS seventeen of AOFI. Effective date. The original effective date of this standard is supposed to be one January twenty twenty six. But since it has taken more time towards finalization, so maybe we might need to expand this one. So we'd like to have your comment on this one as well, that what would be the more appropriate effective date? Should we change it to twenty twenty seven? Or even if you feel that more time is needed, please let us know as a comment now or you can send your comments in writing. There are some transitional provisions that this will apply mostly on a retrospective, on a on a prospective basis. And some of the transitional flexibility has been provided. Then there are appendix F is related to appropriate level of risk reserve, which is coming from FAS thirty five. And then we we like, you know, on the investment accounts as well, investment reserve as well as property equalization reserve, what would be the adequate level? This is already covered in FAS thirty five, but since FAS thirty five is accounting standard, we considered appropriate to add this here in the appendix of this standard as well. It has, it is a huge and very long standard. It has been a very comprehensive, like, you know, discussion. Our brother Islam Ahmed is here as well. Thanks to him for the hard work and the initial research for that. Thanks to all of you for being here with us. Now, let's take quick questions towards the end. We have comment from brother Ibrahim Tachala. Please share the webinar material. Dear brother Ibrahim, this is, as Sister Alia mentioned in the beginning, that this is exactly the same as the PDF version available on AOFI website. Sister Alia, please provide him through type answer and provide him a link to the and maybe you can put it in the chat window also, provide a specific answer to him and to all participants a link to the standard. We request all the participants to provide any other comments if they have in writing. It will be good if you can just provide all the comments in writing, if you, if you, if you were not able to give your comments today. So we are towards conclusion. I have been a bit like, you know, fast. I know that it's, it's getting late for some parts of the world. Like, you know, in Pakistan particularly, where central bank supported, as we know, and that a lot of people today join from Pakistan. So for them, it's already late. So I think here it's also late for us technically. So let's try to conclude the discussion and and brother Imran Awan has mentioned and thanks for brother Islam. Brother Islam, it's thanks from us and all the industry for you. And with that, let's try to see if there is any other pending comment. Otherwise, we conclude. I know we had very good discussion, but I know for some of the section I had to be quick because otherwise I can tell you it need eight hours. And even some of the sections by themselves need a full public hearing of two hours. But we are open to take any comments. If you want a comment now, we can still take. If you want to send comments in writing, please send your comments to governance@AOFI dot com. Since I don't see any other comment coming now, so may I hand it over back to you, Sister Alia, for conclusion?
Yes, brother. Thank you, brother Umar Mustafa Ansari, the Secretary General of AOFI. I would like also to thank our partner, the State Bank of Pakistan. Special thanks also goes to all attendees for your participation in this important public hearing, especially it's a bit late in some regions. So thank you for that. If you still have any comments or suggestions, please send it to governors@AOFI dot com. Please check out our social media account and AOFI's website in order to view the latest update with regard the upcoming public hearing and events. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Thank you, everyone.
Salam alaikum.